So, if you go to page nine, page 175. Call it 175, 132. So, on the, so this one just sent back, this one says number four, it's a hundred and eighty? He got five feet.
Five feet, huh?
Yeah, but is that one? So, yeah, that's where I got that five.
Okay.
Three and a half hours long.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I'm sure by the time, which had a early, uh, seven years ago. Yeah. But they just want to change it from, uh, seven feet.
So, need to, uh, sue, sorry, of building, uh, eighty-two or even apartment. So, those are, those are, yeah.
Okay, well, let us get ourselves started here. Good evening, uh, today is the sixteenth of July. Uh, we got a couple of things to do. First of all, as with all meetings, we start with a pledge allegiance. Stand up there, our flag is over here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all for joining us. All right, we have two items on our agenda tonight. I will talk about those meeting, or about those agendas real quickly. One thing I want to do is first, take care of one of our, um, existing pieces of business. We also, all the members got June eighteenth meeting minutes from a meeting minute, minute, meeting that we had. Um, we have all five members here tonight, so we also have the two alternates, but we're going to stick with the five people. Um, does everybody have a chance to take a look at the meeting minutes? Any questions, comments, or motions to approve them as, and Larry?
So, on page two, um, if you go down about halfway, it says Larry Hall, that's H-O.
Ah!
H-L.
Well done.
And I know you, you, that was spelled that, another one, so that's the only piece of problem there.
Okay, I'll fix that.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so we have one, uh, one correction.
Now, making a motion to accept the meeting minutes of June eighteenth.
Okay, we have a motion on the table to accept the meeting minutes with that one correction. Seconded?
Seconded.
Larry seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Very good, all right. So, we've taken care of that. Um, as an administrative item, and I probably will talk more about this at the end of our meeting, but we have been approved to change our meeting days back to Thursday, and we won't be doing Tuesday, and that'll start next month. So, that'll actually start on, um, August twenty-second.
Fifteen. August fifteenth.
Excuse me. Then September nineteenth, October seventeenth, November twenty-first, and December nineteenth, and that gets us through the end of the year. But the standard date will be Thursday at seven P.M., it's the third Thursday of the month. Um, I think that's probably a good thing, so we've got ourselves there. Two items on our agenda tonight. The first item is Mr. Aaron, and I may pronounce that wrong, but Calcado?
He, that applicant is not here.
Okay. All right, so our second item, Lord Lloyd Stewart.
Swart.
Swart, excuse me, owner of twenty-nine Pontiac Street, I won't, been listening. The applicant seeks to widen the driveway up to thirty-six inches, um, and I saw on the form said thirty inches. I, I have no, we'll, we'll adjust that, but I just, I'll put out there that that's what it was, it was jitsens, as thirty. If it's thirty-six, that's fine, we can talk about that. The current driveway is ten point six-five feet wide and services detached garage behind the main residence. The applicant seeks to widen that portion of the driveway in front of his home, or the home, to the street to facilitate access to allow clearing the snow and whatever else he wants to do. One seventy-five dash three on residential properties with a single-stall garage, the driveway of no more than twelve feet wide from the street to the garage is permitted. An additional apron of twelve feet by thirty-six feet shall be permitted on a residence with a single-car garage. Applicant therefore seeks an area variance to allow a fourteen-foot-wide driveway where there is a twelve-foot ride, uh, driveway allowed. So, if I take that every place else, we want a two-foot variance. Pursuant to, once, then, this is the definition, no driveway is permitted in that portion of the front yard line between the planes of the walls or the main dwelling existing to the front property line. The applicant further requests, um, a use variance to a lava driveway behind, to extend into that portion of the front yard lying between the planes, um, of the sidewalks of the street. Okay, so what I would say is, stand up over here, give us your name, give us your address, we've all got it here on this, and tell us what you've got. I took a look at it, just addressed whether it's thirty or thirty-six inches, um, in your, in your request, and, um, that you're looking for two feet to come over the, the allowed. So, you said ten point six-five, you're allowed twelve, but if you extend into the boundary of the house, that's probably where you get into a bit. Why don't you give us, give us an idea of what you want to do, and what you're looking for?
My name is Lloyd Swart, I live at twenty-nine Pontiac Street, lived there over forty years. My driveway needs resurfacing, so at this time, if I'm going to resurface it, if I could widen it. It's, it's kind of a unique situation, it's the only house on the street that the driveway's on the left side of the house. So, that puts my left property line right at the edge of the driveway, I have nowhere else to go. From the drive, uh, from the lot line to the house is ten point six feet, out front. Uh, I'd like to widen it, uh, because, and right now I got a subcompact car, a regular Jeep. I've had, you know, pickup trucks and stuff, but my neighbor has a parking pad, he parks, not quite to the line, but within a couple of feet of the line. Makes it difficult for me to open the door all the way. Either myself or my wife has to get out onto the grass, because if I pull over to the left side and give her room on the driveway, she can step out, but then I step out on, on the grass between the two driveways. If I pull over to the other side, she's stepping in the grass. Not so bad this time of year, in, in the winter. In the winter, I bring the snow blower out, and I can't, I can just get between the two cars. There's a slight grade, he's a four or five-inch tire, and it gets a little hard to navigate. My wife has fallen out, she broke her leg one year, but slid under the car. If I could move over to the right side, and I don't even have to park in front of the house, but if I can have that area so I can swing my door open, facilitate so we can both get out on the pavement, that's what I'm looking for.
All right, let me ask you a quick question here, just to add clarity for myself, because the first time I went through it, I didn't get it. By the way, I was by it, I, I get it now. You want to extend it two point three-five feet, is that correct?
The, uh, dimension was just to put down, to take it around to the, that's why I put, I put two to three feet, not knowing what I could do with you felt.
Right, you want to extend it to a fourteen-foot-wide driveway?
If I can, it, well, I don't even, once I get a final price on it, I might not want to go all the, I might want to step it though. But before I even get an estimate, I wanted to.
And one other thing I was doing was, this is to the north or into the area where the house exists? So, in other words, you want to take the driveway in some portion in front of the house, right?
Yes, yes.
All right, and you want to make that be fourteen feet, that would still allow you to come back out around, get around the house, get to the?
It would facilitate a lot better.
And it'll make it a little bit safer, and a little bit easier?
Only house on the street on the left side, when the previous owner, owner put a, uh, addition on the other side where everybody else's driveways are, that left it only from the house to the lot, which was ten point six.
So, the request then is for the existing driveway, it's to add three point three-five, or you want, you want the ability to make that fourteen-foot-wide driveway?
Up to fourteen, doesn't, doesn't.
And you want to go into your property, so you're not going to go into your neighbor's property?
Which I end up doing, and I end up bringing the snow blower out.
Understood.
It's getting a little harder to handle that the older I get too.
Understood, okay, I've got, I, hopefully that clarified everybody, but any questions for anybody else, uh, on the board?
Well, looking at the driveway, looking at it, I understand what you want to do, it's a tough situation.
Yeah, I, I have nowhere else to go, because the lot line's right there.
Snow storage too.
Oh, yeah, that's a whole nother problem.
So, are you entering the house, can you enter the house from the, the rear of the house at all?
Uh, we can, we go in through the front door.
Go in through the front?
Yeah, we, we do have a, a door to the backyard.
And that's probably off the enclosed porch, is that correct?
Uh, well, yeah, the enclosed porch is the door that steps out onto the patio. I do have a, a fence that we lack, and unlike from the inside.
Any other comments or questions from anyone on my side? Okay, thank you very much, we've got, oh, excuse me, we do have another question for comment.
Don, help me out here, he's allowed twelve-foot-wide driveway, he just doesn't have the room for a twelve-foot-wide driveway, right?
He's got ten point six-five.
Right. So.
Yeah, the house is in the way.
Right.
We could move that, I guess.
But he can't have the twelve, because then that would encroach in that space in the plane of the house. So, he's stuck with ten point six-five, right, just want to clarify.
Isn't the one side of your driveway actually on the property line?
The whole left side is on the property line, all the way down.
So, he can't go any farther with that?
Well, he, right, he can't go to the left, but the right one, if he had the room, he would, he'd be allowed to be twelve-foot wide.
Well, actually, I've got a two-car garage, it's only got one overhead door, but we have had two cars in there one time, if you want.
The driveway is only allowed to be twelve feet wide.
For one, for one stall, right?
Yeah, per stall.
For two stalls.
Per, per stall.
The driveway is twelve feet wide, now we're allowed twelve.
No, you could have a twenty-four-foot drive, wide driveway if you have two stalls.
Right.
Yeah, you could, but it is a room.
Plus, plus the secondary apron, whatever they call it, twelve by thirty-six?
No, it could be twenty-four feet wide all the way out, if it says two stalls.
That's correct.
If it's a one-car garage, it could be built, twelve-foot wide to a one-car garage, or to a place where a four-car garage could be built, or, and when the one-car garage, you could have an additional twelve-by-thirty-six apron in front of the garage out, but not all the way out to the street.
All right, but he does not have room, so we stop with what he's got.
So. But I suppose if it is actually a two-stall garage, and that, I see the garage is twenty-four point five-eight feet wide. So, to me, that seems to mean that that's a two-stall, that's a two-stall garage, so he's allowed a twenty-four-foot driveway.
Yeah, but I think, don't you get into some things about where it's placed there and how it would come into the house?
Yeah, just let me finish for a second. So, I think the only, they, he, forget about the, if the house wasn't there, he could have a twenty-four-foot-wide driveway, right? But the house is in the way, so now, the driveway's going to encroach on that other section of the code that says you can't have a driveway within the planes of the, of the dwelling itself.
Right.
I think that's the only variance he needs.
Right, so the first, the first variant request is, though, is not necessary.
I don't think he needs the first one, because it's actually a two-stall garage, not a single-stall garage.
Correct. So, really, the, the true request here is a.
Basically, to allow a portion of his driveway in the front yard.
Right.
Pretty much, to the front of his house.
Three point, whatever, three-five feet, if it, if it's ten point six-five, that would give him fourteen.
Fourteen.
Would give you, wouldn't, that'd be an easy way to do it, easier way to do it, is just say, make it fourteen.
Right, up to fourteen foot. Say, basically, you're asking for a variance request of up to three point three-five feet.
Yes, sir. And the fact that it's in front of the living space, actually, it's a bedroom, we don't use it as a bedroom, it's a, my computer.
You're breaking the plane of the house.
Yes.
Okay, the target's not clear, man.
And you haven't, you're having this done?
Oh.
Um.
Question is, when you say resurface, are you resurfacing or replacing?
You, uh, I don't know the difference, I, I said resurfacing.
Are they tearing it out?
It's going to be boxed out, yeah.
Okay, that's a replace.
Okay.
Resurfacing would be, they would just probably seal coating.
Forty years, I haven't done it, so.
They're going to do the same thing with the three point three feet that's going to go into the house?
Yes, yeah, I'll, and like I said, if I'm going to do it now, I have permission to do it, we'll, you know, and then we'll see how much it costs, so.
Understood. All right, another question for anybody, I think we've got clarity. What we don't have there is, okay, thank you, if you have anything else to give to us, I'll close this port.
No, I, I think you forgot the package that I sent.
We do.
So, you went to all your neighbors, and there's nobody that objected to that?
Not that I've heard of, uh, I, I walked up to eighteen or twenty-eight houses in immediate area, because I could see where they could move, and I sent letters to the other.
Okay, all set. Very good, thank you. Okay, I'm going to open it up to the public and see if the public has any comments or, or statements today.
Let me see if anybody's got comments.
No comments from the general public, okay, thank you very much. So, the other issue that we've got here is seeker.
You don't name me any of them.
You might want to wait to, see if they approve, if we approve, or.
Oh, you're going to go that far?
Yeah, they're not laying out tonight.
Is it type two?
Yep.
Yeah, it's an area variance.
Okay. Okay, we have a recommendation that the seeker is type two, any second on that?
Not second.
Seconded by my call, in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? No opposing. All right, so what we have is, we have, um, a seeker type two, so we're okay with that. And what I'm, I'm going to clarify this if I can, but we want a fourteen-foot-wide driveway from the, from the edge of the existing ones there. You want to come into, right, and you want to, you want to use that fourteen feet, three point three of it, or whatever it takes, will encroach on the front of living space on your house.
Yes, sir.
I think you need to stick with the way it was advertised.
Okay.
He wants to widen the driveway up to thirty-six inches, so, and that thirty-six inches is, is in the front of the house. So, the variance would be to allow, you know, three feet.
Okay, it would be fourteen point three-five, or six and a?
Forget the fourteen point three-five part, the variant, just stick with the, up to, up to three feet.
Okay, well, we got to make sure that it goes into the boundaries of the front of the house.
Right, so he wants to widen the driveway up to three feet in front of his house, that would be the variance.
Fair enough.
He hasn't decided if he's going to do the full three feet or not.
Add one, he's got up to.
Again, I put thirty inches down to notify the neighbors, because I didn't know twenty-four, thirty-six inches, I picked them.
Right, but your, your application was somewhere between twenty-four and thirty-six inches.
Yes, sir.
So, they consider the, the maximum would be the thirty-six inches, if you want to make it smaller, that's fine.
Thank you.
All right, do we have a motion, uh, for that?
I will make a motion for the granting of use variance to extend the width of the existing driveway, à la new driveway, should you know, up to thirty-six inches for a total width of thirteen point six-five feet.
Wait, it's a, it's an area variance.
Oh, we want to give, because it's ten point six-five right now, we give three.
Twelve tenths.
And thirteen point, yeah. Okay, so we've got a motion on the table to allow that?
I'll second it.
We have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None? Go forth, man, have a good time with that, and hopefully, nobody falls.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
All right, I bet, you have a good day. All right, we also have another item on our agenda, but we don't have any person here to present for that.
Just sort of here on their way.
He's on his way?
So, we talked about the agenda.
I seconded.
You seconded?
Right.
I did it.
Okay.
And we've got to wait then for Aaron? Do we? Well, technically, I guess, if we chose not to, but the fact that Jake has called him and that he has said he's on his way, and it's a relatively small village, let's, let's give him a few minutes. Thank you.
No, 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 you were.
Next meeting, is there anything coming up for our next meeting for, for August?
Nothing yet.
Wow.
With moving the, with moving the meeting day, we had to, it, it lessens the time that we have for the next deadline. So, I don't know if we'll get anything before that deadline.
Fair enough.
Pizza Place is opening where the music store was.
I did notice that.
That's going to be a, uh, change of use.
It's going to be the one that's not, not terrible right now, isn't it? Okay.
That's what I heard, right?
I saw the sign on the window.
Yeah.
Was there during the parade, we all walked up to that street.
Are you Aaron?
I'm Aaron.
Aaron.
How are you guys doing?
We're doing great. What we had was, we had you on the agenda for tonight.
Yeah, I was, I was at my, uh, my mother's birthday dinner, I forgot, I, hey, lost track of time.
Tell her, a big issue coming up, man, I got to go, mom. Um, all right, so, you're the owner of two oh eight Johnson Street?
Yes.
You seek, uh, to install a twenty-foot paved, twenty-foot-wide paved driveway where a fifteen-foot-wide driveway currently exists. The property includes a single-stall end-loaded garage, um, and then we've got some, some words in the definition. On residential properties with a single-stall garage, the driveway shall extend no more than twelve feet, um, and from the street, the garage shall be permitted. In addition, apron of twelve by thirty-six feet, um, this talks about that, the variance, all right, variance to allow a twelve-foot by fifty-nine-foot, and, this is where, and I've been over there a couple of times.
Yeah.
To try and figure this out. Why don't you get up here, introduce yourself in the speaker, tell us what it is you want to do, because the, what I have is you've got a garage that goes out north herself right now.
Correct, yes.
And then there's a turn that brings you down the driveway.
Correct.
And goes out to the road.
Correct.
What, and that's a single-car garage?
Yes.
So, what I'm a little confused with is, what are we trying to do here?
Um, I'm just trying to make it so that I can, like, more easily access my garage, whether I want to back in or park in it. Um, and the woman who had owned the property before me, um, her, she never had a paved driveway at all, it was always gravel, as far as I knew. Um, her family claims she lived there since nineteen sixty-three, and they, they never paved the driveway. Yeah, so, exactly, um, so, when I put my driveway in there, I, I just, um, I don't want to be, like, falling off the driveway, going onto, like, my grass or anything, I plan to keep the, the place nice, um, and I just don't want to mess it up. And then, um, I noticed, like, the only other one-car garage on my street, he's got, like, a, like, a three-car wide driveway with a big giant camper in it as well, um, so I just was wondering, you know, what, what, what the reasoning behind mine would be, it's not, got that a lot.
Okay, is that a question for us?
I mean, I guess I'm just trying to say it would, it would kind of be odd if he could have such a large driveway and I couldn't, just a couple houses down.
Okay.
That kind of thing.
All right, what we've got right now is a single-car garage, will give you a twelve-foot garage, or, um, a twelve-foot wide driveway. You can get an additional twelve feet.
Okay.
And that would be for essentially two lanes, but what really is, is it's for additional cars in the driveway, it allows for, you did not have to move.
That, that was another thing, um, because my father, he's been helping me, like, renovate the house and things like that, and that was another point he kind of brought up, just, you know, if, uh, if a driveway's too narrow, you know, it's not just me who lives there, so, if I had to, like, shuffle my cars around for whatever reason, whether it's, I got to go to work before someone else, or whatever it is, if I have someone over, it's just the whole convenience factor too, of, you know, people going into my lawn or whatever, you know, just shuffling cars around.
Well, that's one of the reasons why you're allowed, that's one of the reasons why you're allowed an additional twelve, additional twelve feet, is to prevent the parking on the lawn.
Okay.
But it's not the full length, it's only twelve by thirty-six, it wouldn't go all the way to the lawn.
Oh, so it'd go like that?
You have a one-car garage, right?
Yeah.
But the quirky thing is, is it's an end-load garage.
Yeah.
If, if the garage were tilted, like, and be front-loading, he wouldn't be here for a variance, because it wouldn't be fifty-nine feet, because you're measuring it basically from the back of the house, you know, it'd be from the front of the house, and it'd be within the thirty-six feet. It's only because it's a side-loading garage, so he's asking for an additional twenty-three feet. From thirty-six feet to fifty-nine.
And, but also the, the width of, he's asking for a width.
The width, he's allowed twenty-four feet, he's allowed twelve feet plus a twelve-foot apron, so that's, so in essence, with a single-car garage, you get twenty, a twenty-four foot.
Yeah, I'm familiar with this, I, I have a neighbor, Rosa, over on. Yeah, I'm familiar with this, I, I have a neighbor who rolls over on my grass every day when they roll over their side of the road. And I also have been exchanging cars in my driveway for over thirty-five years. So, I'm very, I'm aware of that, I don't know if it's, it's not, if, yes, it's somewhat difficult, but it can be done, you can do it. And, and the thing is, is that everybody in our neighborhood does that, in essence. So, it, it, it doesn't carry a lot of water for me when you say that I need it for the convenience of, of exchanging cars. I mean, if you really want that, you need to move out a little bit farther, we have lots which are a lot wider.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I'm, I'm just saying, for me, it doesn't carry a lot of water.
For, for me, for me, it does carry a lot of water.
No, I, I understand that, and I'm not gonna comment on that, why it doesn't, it makes a big difference to you.
Yeah.
I'm just saying that there's a lot of people in my neighborhood who do that every day, you know, every day.
So, how, I'm just, I, I guess this is just the part that's not quite limited, like, just down the street, there is a, there is a, I'm not sure obviously the exact dimension of this, of this gentleman's driveway, but he has enough room, he has a one-car garage, he has enough room to park two cars by, side by side, and then have an additional camper, a, a giant camper, like, the size of, like, a, a school bus.
He has a home there, I, I know. I saw that, and I was wondering if there was any variance that was given to that, uh, resident at some time, is my question, I don't know. But I did see that, I didn't see anybody else on your lawn that has that situation, or wants that situation.
I think he might be, he might be one of the only other one cars, yeah.
So-
It's just, you see, that was just a lot for me.
I understand that, I understand that, that's one of the problems when we give, when people do that, whether they do it and ask for forgiveness after, and they've got a variance, or if we do give them a variance, it, it sets up a certain, uh, uh-
Present?
Present. Something that we have to be very, I, I believe we should be very careful. And I, I noticed that the substrate for, so, it's already, it's already been laid out for twenty feet, is that correct?
Twenty feet is correct, that's what's on the map.
It's already been laid out already?
At my property?
Yes.
So, my father, he does, like, paving and things like that.
Yeah.
And I, just, your same reaction, I said, this kinda looks a little big. And he said that since, I don't know if you saw the property before we even got there, the whole front yard was like that English ivy stuff that just, it was untamed for, I don't know how many years. Um, and, I mean, there's no grass in the front yard yet, just got the roof replaced, finished up today. Um, and I asked him why it did look like that right now, and he just said, they typically will lay it wider than you need to, and then when it's all said and done, you kinda come in and clean it up. So, I'm, my father's got all the, the plans on what he wanted to do with actually making the driveway. Obviously, he would know more about, like, the whole driveway part than me, um, but yeah.
So, for, for us, and, and this is what we've all got.
Yeah.
Does this tell me that you are, when I look at the left, when I look at the right-hand side, my right-hand side, is that the existing edge of the driveway right now?
Um, as far as, like-
In other words, right over there?
Well, right now, I don't, I don't have a driveway.
But it is laid out there.
There's, 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 there's stone on the ground, yeah.
Right, so it gives us the idea of what's going to-
That's, that's where the driveway is, that's where it's listed.
This is my father.
Alright.
Alright.
So, again, going back to this, do we want an additional eight feet?
Yes.
Or are we looking, and, and by the way, what that's going to do is go into the outline of the house, and where there is living right now.
Can I get you?
I don't understand. That's a side-load garage.
But, but that's the question I've got, because someplace in here, did that extend into the front yard or the existing yard by eight feet?
No.
Okay, did it extend towards your neighbor on the other side by eight feet? You don't make, what you have, you're twelve feet right now.
We're four and a half feet off the lot line, south lot line.
And you currently are, without having done anything.
We're three feet south of the garage, the side-load garage. The, the north line of that driveway is three feet south of the garage door. It's a side-load garage, the driveway is twenty feet wide, and it's parallel all the way to the street. And we're four and a half feet off, off the south lot line, the, the code says you have to be three.
Jake, is this existing twenty feet?
No, no, it's existing, it's fifteen feet, it's not twelve, the, the existing, or the pre-existing gravel driveway was twelve feet wide, and this is straightening that out and making it, you know, the problem was to make it twenty feet wide all the way out, which, when you configure, you're allowed a twelve by thirty-six, that's four hundred and thirty-two square foot apron, and this is a four hundred, so you're talking, it's about forty square feet. Instead of twelve feet wide, it's only gonna be eight feet wider than the twelve foot, for a little longer than thirty-six, or fifty-nine instead of thirty-six.
Okay, but it's blocking them.
And when he's not gonna drive across grass, because there's a completely little turn in it, and then have to fix the grass every spring, and probably, it seems like he's really gonna do a good job and clean it up, the property, and want to make it look nice, and following the proper steps, which should probably be encouraged.
Is, 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 is that a three, is that a three-foot set there from the side, or is it a five-foot?
It's three, the driveways have to be three, and there's setup is, is four, the gravel's probably closer than four and a half, um, because the gravel, the base of the driveway is wider than the driveway itself always is, so, it's quite a-
The asphalt will be four and a half feet from the lot.
So, do you know, just, I'm, I'm sorry about this, but do you know, uh, and where that is? Cause I have something in the book that has, um, a five-foot minimum.
That's one seventy-five fifty-three, I believe.
Is that what you think is the last?
Yeah.
It's in one seventy-five fifty-three.
All these working is bullshit.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Section one seventy-five dash fifty-three. H.
H.
Additional questions?
Very last sentence of subsection H, no driveway shall be placed closer than three feet from the property.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate that, I even add it under line.
Shaded?
Yep.
That's the additional-
Yes, yeah, I'm-
Was this for a total of twenty feet?
So, you're allowed twelve by forty, you wanted the twenty, so you're asking for eight-
Correct.
-from the street to the house.
Correct.
Which is, I'm guessing roughly what it says in the book.
No, that's not true, he's at the house, he's got three. What he wants is what's shaded there, all the way to the rear house line, not the front house line.
But, but he's allowed twelve-foot garage.
What if, what if-
What if twenty-four all the way to the road?
What if this is the existing driveway though? Then he's just asking for this part.
Except that it's not exist-
This doesn't exist.
How do we know though?
Oh, it did, it, 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 it did prior.
Is there stone back there?
Is there stone back there?
There is now, yes. I was, I was unaware that I needed a variance, okay, that's why it's not the key question. Okay, so, the driveway's all stone, yes, you're right, but I'm looking for a variance so that you know.
Wait, so, now, when, when your son bought the house, was that gravel? Was, was the, was the stone back here?
There was stone there.
There was.
It wasn't much of a driveway.
It's a sound.
This driveway was never-
Just wanted to know what it looks like before you did anything.
It's far.
Yeah.
They can see the gravel back there.
That's the previous satellite image, I had snow back there. So, to me, they're just asking for this area front.
And while I understand that there's stone there, isn't that stone extending past where the garage is? And here's, here's where I'm going with this, and by the way, the end result is, we should probably make sure you need, but, if I take a dump truck, dump it in my backyard, am I now allowed to drive vehicles back there?
If this, if this right here is dumped with stone, or is it dead?
No, 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 it's just to the back of the house, just to the back line of the house. And so that you can pull out of the driveway, out of the garage, and it pulls straight out, and it's allowed going on and going on.
Okay, now, I-
Yeah, no, we have no intention of doing a parking lot in the backyard.
Thank you.
But you do wanna be able to park on the twenty-foot one.
Well, yeah, I mean, you know, I mean, to him-
You just came in, you didn't hear the Paul's comment.
What was it?
We live in the Village of Webster, and we have seventy-five-foot long, single-wide driveways, and we jockey cars all the time.
Okay, but there, there isn't, there isn't a single-wide driveway in that entirety of it, so.
I didn't, but there, there is.
No, there isn't.
But there may be the extension on the sides for a single car driveway.
There's one single-car garage on that street, and it's a thirty-foot wide driveway all the way to the street.
And we're not sure if they're gonna be here, and so they could be-
That could be a variance. We weren't, I was asking the question earlier, we had a variance for that, I have no idea what variance was.
No, that's, that's straight up, but all I'm saying is-
But he was using it as justification to have his, and that's poor way of arguing his point.
No, we're, we're not here to argue.
No, I, I mean, I don't mean arguing it, I'm gonna discuss it.
All I wanna do is not have to, in the middle of the winter, say, jeez, I gotta go to the store, well, let me move my coffee. You know what I'm saying?
I don't know what you're saying.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
I don't know what you're saying, I live in the Village of Middleton.
Alright, but code is allowed, is allowed to have an additional twenty feet.
He's allowed for a twenty-four foot wide driveway with a single car garage.
You live next door to him, do you, do you live on Johnson Street, do you live in the old part of the village?
I do.
Well, the old part's different than this part.
I understand that.
So, but you're, you're, you're judging him as if he's in the old part of the village.
But, what I'm judging is how wide it is, how wide it is.
Well, Larry, you could go ahead and put another twelve-foot driveway on your driveway.
No, I can't.
Why?
Cause it'd sit in his front room then.
You can't, you could get a driveway put in the front of your house then.
In a variance.
Larry?
We just approved an area variance.
You would, you would approve that, huh?
We've already set a precedent.
Well, I think that some people in my neighborhood did not approve that.
But they're not on the zoning board.
Alright, let's see if we can't pull this thing back and do. What we've got is we have an item for the board that's looking for you to extend your existing driveway. Now, if I drive by the house, I see a driveway, stone, gravel, I see a driveway, you go up, you reach the corner of the house, and you turn left, that takes you into the garage. Probably even have to do something when you come out, but that's what's there, and that could be a twelve. But the, the definitions and the code allows for a twelve-foot driveway. The code in addition allows for twelve additional feet.
By thirty-six.
By thirty-six. So, what they would do is that will stop it before it gets to the road, and it'll turn it into your existing driveway. In other words, you've got wide up there, and it builds it back into a single driveway at some point.
It chokes it at the street.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we're trying to avoid that. Because that's what we would like. Biggest part of the deal, the, the reasoning is convenience to have a driveway that will hold two cars, and that people don't have to jockey around to, to get in and out, and, you know, you want continuity in the neighborhood. There is not one driveway in that neighborhood that chokes down to twelve feet, not one.
Single-car garages?
There's one other single-car garage, and it's thirty feet of the street.
See, if I've got a two-car garage sitting on the house-
Yeah.
-I can bring that to the road twenty-four feet wide, as long as I don't extend it down to you.
Here's the other, other part of this story, you just bought the house, it's twenty-four years old. We were gonna put a two-car-
Congratulations.
We were gonna put a two-car garage on the house, but I said, slow it down, let's wait a few years, save a little bit of money before we do that project. And we already have a ton of work in ours. So, you know, I understand that you've got a code that you gotta follow, you've got procedures for a variance, and, you know, we're, we're here to respect that, okay? We don't wanna just pave the driveway and say we're sorry to leave. So, we're here to respect the zoning board, but now we're asking also, you know, we're pleading with you to, uh, let this driveway be like every other driveway in that neighborhood, which is wider than twelve feet at the street, every driveway in that street. And the only other single-car garage on that street is thirty feet wide at the, at the road.
Again, we might have to sign the code enforcement for that one, because it might not be approved.
I'm, I'm not looking to cause trouble for that person.
But you can't, you can't say because there's another house, we don't know.
Well, well, I think-
We don't know if they have a permit, we don't know if they have variances. So, to me, that's not allowed, they need to come to us and ask for forgiveness now, and we might just tell them to tear it out. Right?
I think, I think-
To what?
Stated another way, I think his argument is, is that by allowing the twenty-foot wide driveway through to the street does not represent a change in the character of the neighborhood.
Thank you very much.
Because everyone else, everyone else, everyone else has at least a twenty-four foot wide one, and there's this thirty-five foot wide one, whether or not it's had a variance, whether it's legal or illegal, doesn't matter. The point is that it doesn't represent a change in the character of the neighborhood. However, if you make him choke it down to twelve feet at the end, he, to me-
But that's what we're supposed to do, and that's what we have done in the past, is you can allow for double, you could take a single car, you can take twelve, you can make it twenty-four, you do that up near the house, you have to question as to whether you can extend it past the house, but then when you get to the street, you get thirty-six feet, you choke it down to twelve feet, and we've done that.
Is there, is there any other, uh, talk in the code about a side, side-load garage?
No, that's the other.
You see, this is a side-load garage, now, if you've got a single-car garage, you're pulling straight out, you know, maybe all this talk is worth something, but it's a side-load garage. You know, you can't tell it's a single-car garage from the road.
Jake, you look like you wanted to-
Yeah, I know, I don't really have any say, but I just have a question, um, what's, does anybody, does anybody articulate the purpose of that? I mean, in our code, the part that discusses the width of the driveways, or how a driveway's supposed to look, and the dimensions of the driveway, or can we speculate on why that's in the building? I'm guessing that it probably went in there for uniformity, so everything was kinda consistent, and basically what they're asking for is uniformity and consistency with whatever is existing in the neighborhood already. Right, it's no different, and, and Larry, in your area, you live in the old village where you can touch the houses standing in between them, you can touch the wall, you don't have room for a wider driveway, so you chose to live in an area where you have to shuffle cars around.
I totally-
He chose to live in an area where you had room for a wider driveway.
I totally understand that, but I, what I disagreed with was, was the justification that he was using to have that done.
Well, it's not, no one wants to go out and move cars around, it's not, it's not widening or anything, it's saying, why do it if you don't have to? Why not make it easier, make it look like everything else?
You make a good argument, Jake, I have no idea what's the rest of the driveways on that block. I have no idea if there's, if they have gone, if they're only twelve feet at the bottom of that.
Right.
I don't know. I know that one you're talking about, and you had a point. My first reaction when, when I went by that is that, was there a variance given for this? Because I knew that the argument, or the discussion you could make is, you've- Because I knew that the argument or the discussion you could make is, you've given one already for that. I understand that.
And by the way, I can't answer that question. I don't know one. But that's kind of a single point aside. What's before this board right now and what we have is we have... You have... Here's what I'm gonna do in my mind. I'm gonna try and put it as logically as I can. And sometimes we make it, sometimes we don't. But we've got a single car garage. Okay.
That's a side load.
The fact that it turns, it's a side load. That's probably a better term.
It's difficult.
But there is nothing, and I have read it multiple times. There's nothing that says if it's coming out to the side, you can have 24 feet. You can do that. What it does do is it limits you to 36 feet. That's the distance coming back to the road. So in other words, what they've done is tilted it at the end. What I see, and I'm gonna make this as simple as I possibly can. Sometimes they don't always let me go there. But you've asked us, take your one-car garage, put on an additional eight feet. So what that tells me is that from the corner of the house or the garage, you're gonna come over into the front of it by an additional eight feet. Is that correct?
Correct.
All right. And you want that additional eight feet to run the entire distance out to the road. So that would be the variance, is you would be asking us to go out to the road with the additional eight feet. Does that sound fair to what we're trying to do here? Larry, did that give it...
It's fine.
Michael?
Your interpretation ignores the additional 12 feet for an apron. So I don't understand why you're ignoring that, but...
What... Because you say apron, what are you referring to? A little flare at the road?
I don't know. An apron isn't... I don't know what a driveway apron is. You're in the driveway business.
It's a workhorse business. Yeah. What's a driveway apron?
At the end of the 20 feet?
What word? Are you Alco?
Alco, yes.
That's who I'm... Many, 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 many moons ago. We were... I believe we were together.
A driveway apron is not defined in the...
So we've... At the street, I flared it off two feet in each direction, just so you don't run over the grass. But it's only two feet by two feet. It's not... Nothing is lateral. It's just something to make the...
I think what they're referring to is you would be allowed to have 24-foot wide at the road. The length of your driveway, that's all right.
Well, I have 24 at the back of the gutter, but it chokes to 20 after a couple of feet.
Right. No, no, no. I'm just saying, you're allowed 12. You're also allowed an eighth of 12. So you could technically have 24 feet at the road. And let's say for argument's sake, the apron extends to the property 36 feet. And then doglegs into the...
Yeah.
I know. It can be hoping. That's what I believe the apron is intended to be.
Okay. Are we also considering that our older parts of the village, which may even have granite or concrete curbs, that are set in stone as far as their width? And, you know, that may go back to the dictate of why you need to hit a certain dimension as you hit the street. You know, but this road has gutters. So, you know, you don't have that constraint.
I can speak to that. Jake, you... Tom Greer, when I put my driveway in, the new driveway back in the... The street was being reconstructed. I had a single car garage. I widened it to 24 feet. And I could only go 36, 30 feet. And then 36 feet. And then I had to cut in 12 feet.
You had curves?
Yes. We have curves, and that's the problem. And personally, it looks stupid. It's a pain in the neck. And you've seen my drivers. But with the concrete gutters, there's no...
Right. Right. Yeah. Yeah. And there's, you know, villages like La Vona. I remember doing the curbs on that street with the curb machine. You know, we had to know where every driveway was. Every time we do one of those situations, in Henrietta, they have curbs. Brighton, they have curbs. Locating the driveway is always a problem.
So, just for my... The eight-foot width extension, that would be now intersecting. End of the driveway would hit the house?
It's shaded area. I brought the sidewalk three feet past the end of the garage.
Yes.
Okay?
The building ends here.
The building ends right there. Yep.
Okay.
Yes.
So the eight-foot does not cross the plane of the house. This eight-foot proposal does not cross the plane of the house.
No, there's three feet in here.
Okay. That's a very...
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, there's three feet in there. So...
Say no more. Say no more. Then you don't need variance because he's not in the plane of the house. So it's not an area where we're using... Extend that.
Okay.
Okay.
Right? Is that correct? It's 20. There would be no variance required because the 20-foot width, final width, does not intersect or does not cross the plane of the house.
Yeah, there's no part of it that's gonna be in...
Hmm?
There's no part of what's proposed that's gonna be in front of the house.
Okay. That's good. So there's no variance for that respect where the previous guy was crossing the plane of the house. Front to back, from the road to the back, what's the approximate width? 80?
80 feet. Yeah, whatever the subject is of the house. You know, those houses are gonna save. But...
So wait. I... The way I boil this down in my head, you're allowed 12 foot by... This tall, 80.
Yeah.
960 square feet.
Right.
Then you're allowed an extra 12 by 36. That's another 432 square feet. So you're allowed technically by code 1,392 square feet. You're asking for 1,600. 200 square foot of additional paving. That's what he's asking for. When it all boils down to it. Is it in keeping with the characteristics of the neighborhood? The ultimate installation? Is it relatively consistent with the neighborhood? Is it a detriment to the neighborhood? Will it adversely affect the neighborhood or the neighborhood? From everything I've heard, I don't think so.
What about the 36 feet? And I'm looking for the definition right now.
Apron?
Yeah.
Yeah. Look at that.
This says an additional apron of 12 feet by 36 feet ways for a single car... Houses with a single car garage can have an additional apron of 12 feet by 36 feet.
Right.
From presumably from the... Makes no sense. I'd start at the street going, so it's from the front of the garage out.
That's where I would put it.
I don't know if it's 12-foot wide, 36-foot wide.
How far is it from the garage to the front? What Pete went on to call the gutter, but...
The back of the gutter?
My kids, when they were little, would call that the sidewalk.
Can we have... You have a map there? Is this my map? That's somebody else's. All right. We have one of these.
Yeah, we all got the same one. That's what we got.
What's... What do we agree on here?
It's 40.9.
40. And then there's 17 and a half feet from the back of the gutter to the right of the way, which is the property line. So 17 and a half plus 40, that's 57 and a half. Oh, 58 feet to the front of the house.
Okay. So we did that. It says you can only go 36 feet, which says you get four feet stopping at the road. What I'm hearing, hey, I can't get this... Well, 36 to 40.9 is four feet.
I'm confused. I can't...
Apron. It's the whole apron definition.
Yeah. Okay. All right.
I know one more. He wants an apron that's eight feet wide and 58, seven feet long.
All right.
That's what you're asking for. Yep.
57.
Yeah. From the road to the house.
From the back of the gutter to the front of the house.
So 12 by 80 is...
You want the APY wide. This is 12. To make the turn. That's it. It's easy. Easy now.
Well, and the two-car and the additional 12 feet is automatically allowed when you have a single car garage.
Yes. So he doesn't want 12. He wants 8.
He's only asking for 8. And he's asking that it comes through.
He needs more than 36.
Right.
So take the extra four.
Right.
Slam it on to the 12. Boom! So all he needs is an extra 8 by 23.
46, 56, 23. Well, it's what, 200 square feet?
Yeah. It's 198 square feet in that neighborhood.
Okay.
What it all comes down to.
Larry, I know you've had a few comments.
I'm good.
Okay. So what I see, us being asked here, is an eight-foot extension onto the existing driveway, which would make it 20 feet wide. And that would run it 59 feet as opposed to the existing 36, which the allowable 36. So that part's not even there. What they're asking for is an additional 23 feet past their current apron or the existing apron to run it straight out to the road. Get it?
I just hope to walk out of here with a variance.
Does that do it?
All right. I really don't need to understand it.
I got that.
You just want to build that.
Yeah. Yeah. I want to build that. I want to build that.
You got it with the right words.
Every other driveway.
You did put the right words right.
That's what we're not gonna address.
What's that?
It's a little like for the Meijer that I'm really caring about.
Well, I didn't want to put that.
It's a copy of that.
We can make it either.
No, I don't care. I just... I see them both.
Yeah. No. We... This one's gonna be asphalted. We just put a new roof on yesterday. New bathroom, new floors, new kitchen cabinets. Like I said, he was gonna do a two-car garage.
Did you do that one?
He talked about it.
They look sharp, though.
They do.
They do. There's a couple on, like, Boulder. Boulder, right there. I like them.
Okay.
And is the truck going to move at some point?
The truck was being used as a dumpster for the roof. Do you? You're not getting here yet? No. Truthfully, we have probably taken six truckloads. It took three truckloads of trees, debris, all the...
Oh, brilliant.
That front yard was a disaster. Took three truckloads to Alco recycle. There was a pile of junk. That property used to have a pool in the backyard. And they filled it in. And there was a patio in the back that...
It was sunken.
It was sunken, and it was draining water into the basement. I ripped that out. I mean, I've taken six truckloads of stuff out of that yard. So I hope the neighbors are happy with what we're doing.
Yes, I'm with next to them.
Oh, really? Oh, good.
Ryan and Mike.
Oh. Yeah. Very nice.
All right. Not yet. I haven't. We haven't finished. Okay. We're good with you guys. I would recommend no baloney place. We're gonna take care of this right away. But I am gonna open it up to the public and ask the public if they have any comments to speak for or against this.
It's you.
Nothing from you. Okay. So we'll close that portion.
Okay. Sit down.
No comments from the general public. All right. So what we've got here is...
Let's talk to the... Let's contact the neighbors.
Okay. All right. So we got a seeker type 2.
I make a motion that's a type 2 action, a seeker.
Seconded.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
No.
Okay. One opposed. Very good. All right. So what we're looking for then? We've got a seeker type 2. So we've done that. What we're looking for is we're looking for... And in my mind, and the attorney can correct me if he thinks I need to be corrected on this, but we're looking for extending the apron from 36 feet to 59 to take it out to the road in a straight line. Because up to 36 feet, there is no request... Well, there is no need for a request up with that way. So that would be what I recommend on the table, if anybody's got it.
All right. I will make a motion for an area variance of... For the construction of an eight-foot by plus or minus 59-foot-long apron adjacent to your 12-foot driveway, where a 12-foot by 36-foot apron is normally allowed.
I'll second it. Okay, Michael, we've got that seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Larry? Thank you. For the one, proof as it is.
Thank you.
And they feel that to come all the way out, and that's, that's the way I'll make sure that it's worded, it would be eight feet to run from the point on the house all the way out to the road in a straight line.
Uh, three feet from the house.
Okay.
I'm just saying where it is now.
All right.
Yeah, three feet, I think we're 27 and a half feet from the house to the south property line, so that's three, takes you to 24 and a half, 20-foot driveway leaves you four and a half to the south property line. So it's four and a half, 20 feet of driveway, and you've got three feet of grass, and you've got the plane of the house.
But it's still, it's gonna be an eight-foot additional...
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's 20 feet wide.
Yep, there you go.
Total 20 feet.
And that runs out to the road.
Correct.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you guys. You can take the time to explain it to us.
Very good. Larry, we're gonna have you over for a barbecue, so you can see how the next is.
Yeah, I didn't like it either.
I didn't say anything.
You can come too. All right, thank you, guys, thank you.
You're welcome.
Will I get anything in the mouth? Or we don't need any?
Um... Jake?
Going to the village office, get your permit.
Pay it, all right.
I'll send you something untrue, I'll send notice of decision, but get it before it rains.
Okay, all right, thank you, everybody.
Thank you all.
All right. Take care.
Okay, before we excuse ourselves, we talked about, there's nothing on our agenda, but there could be for the next August meeting. Recognize that the meetings have changed.
Training.
If you haven't done your training, and I did some online, so I sent that in, but there's training coming up, New York State Freshwater Wetlands Act Regulations Update, Wednesday, August 14th, from 12 to 1. Sounds like it's a video. Okay, now, I will, I will bring this up because it's come up a couple of times, and I would like to prevent it from coming up that way in the future. Number one, I don't believe we, you know, we will periodically hear about other people in the neighborhood. I generally don't address those when we're doing something for someone here, but the question should be, should we, and I think we have the ability to either make a recommendation or to have a meeting and go back to the trustees, and let's talk about this apron issue, and just what it means. Do we really want a 24-foot driveway to stop at 36 feet, an apron in? Because we have done that before in the past, based on what we've done. But I, I really think that, that we need to, well, here's the question, do we need to address what's currently in the regulations? We can't change them, but what we can do is we can make recommendations that they be changed. Or we get told that they're not gonna change them, and here's why, and the subject. That would mean that we would either extend one of our meetings out, an additional 30 minutes, or we would have an additional meeting, but I'll call back when it's up. But if, what I'm hearing is, no, I don't wanna talk about this, but we, you know, we'll do it, but I would recommend that we do this.
So you're asking for a zoning change? A rendition?
I'm asking if you would like to enter into that discussion so that we could make a recommendation to those who have the authority to change the zoning codes.
From 12-foot apron to 24-foot apron?
Or leave it, our recommendation could be, leave it exactly as it is, so never change it.
So my memory of why that code came around was because there was a house over here that was already...
Yes, sir, I know the one you're talking about.
24 feet wide, and they wanted...
12.
They wanted, well, they wanted to go all the way to the road, so it would've been 36 feet wide.
And by the way, we told them...
They had eight people living in their house.
And we told them, no. And oh, by the way, they do it anyhow.
So I think that reason why we came up with 12 feet and 36 was so that when you have a 24-foot driveway already, why do you need a 36-foot wide driveway at the road? That's my recollection. I don't, I couldn't even tell you what that, that was probably eight, nine years ago.
Do we want to address this?
Well, it is, uh, absolutely frustrating to him and us when they're pointing out the, the other presidents there, the bigger, better...
I mean, when you already have a single-car garage, or driveway, that's a pain in the butt, but I could see just having a different code for something for a single, or a single-car driveway.
Okay, so here's what I'm going to do. I'm going to extend our meeting, see as though we don't have one scheduled for August. I'm not gonna do it there. I'm gonna say, that'll give us time to examine what's out there, why we might want to recommend something, what we see happening, and then we can make a recommendation that we should address, or that the people who can, should address, and then, by the way, the trustees have... We can bring Jake and our new inspector into the issue. He's nodding his head.
Well, Chris, what did the town of West?
I don't remember.
I think it's just, I mean, it's everything's 24 feet wide anyways.
Wow, wow, West over there, man.
Yeah.
All right, fair enough. I'm going to extend the September meeting, and that will give you some time to take a look at what's out there, what's not out there. The recommendation can be, we shouldn't do anything, I exist, I hear what's always there, or we may say, there's a reason for doing this, or we ought to. Okay. Any other comments or thoughts before I close it? We don't have anything currently on the agenda for August.
I make a motion to end the meeting?
Motion in place.
Second that.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Very good.
Zero.